State your name and please state your case.
Ryan Dahl, three twenty eight E Superior Street.
Get the mic up to your mouth.
Sorry?
I don't think that's hooked up actually.
Don't bother then. Speak up, that's all.
Ryan Dahl, uh, three twenty eight E Superior Street, um, bought the property about two years ago. Bought it, it had an existing concrete, um, slab on the back there. Um, here, just mainly would like to put in a garage back there. Yeah, that's, just didn't have a garage and wanted to build one.
You've already built it?
No, no, not started anything.
You wanna build it?
Yeah, I wanna build one.
That makes it much easier.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're on the corner of Superior and Guyan?
Correct, yeah, right there on the map there.
Yeah, and right on an alley as well?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's why you need it for the, the streets of front yard under definition. So, that explains the first one, or the last one, I guess.
Yeah, I was curious on the front there.
I can, um, sorry, I'm the guy gonna be proposing to put the garage out. I can give you the breakdown on dimensions and the, like, the heights and everything if you guys would like.
Is that slab gonna be sufficient?
Yeah, yeah, it's got, so the slab has been there for probably fifteen, twenty years. It was built, it's thickened, it's one foot on the outside edge, and it was, it's all level. So, it's somebody put it there years ago for a garage, I'm sure, and they just never put the walls up. So, the house had changed ownership multiple times, I think, and he picked it up a couple of years ago. And, um, so, yeah, it's, it's like, if you, if you see the picture there, you got about five feet of brass off the alley. And then, Matt, was it nine foot to the, I think from the center of the alley to?
Yeah, it's an eighteen foot right of way, so, yeah, nine feet typically either side of the center of that alley.
We were, we needed a foot on one side, and then on the front side, I think it was a foot and a half or two feet of, of the variance. If you guys look at the sidewalk, uh, going there, it's seven feet from the sidewalk to the proposed front of the garage. So, it's not like it's, uh, there's, uh, there's quite a bit of room there, you know, it's not right on top of the sidewalk or anything. And it's in line with, or it's pretty, pretty close to in line with the front of, with the side of the house, the front of the garage would be. And then on the backside of it, it's actually offset a little bit. The lots are kinda, they're, they're kinda tight right there, but, um. Standing in the road looking at it, you'd think that it's not, uh, it's, it's not two stories or anything. So, coming around the alley, there's visual, you could see, and then off the sidewalk, there's quite a bit of room. And, um, somebody did it originally to put a garage there, or else the pad would've been pitched. But it's, uh, pretty close to right on level.
What's gonna be the height of the garage?
Nine foot. The walls would be, and then?
What's the center peak?
Um, center peak is gonna be about thirteen foot off the ground.
Okay.
Before we go any farther, will you please state your name for the record?
Oh, Nate Esslinger.
E S L I N G E R.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I've known him like forty years.
Is this your property that you're dealing with?
No, I live around the corner, I, I'm actually a builder and an auto.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know.
Sorry. So, yeah, that's, that's kinda what my, our, our idea was originally. And then, uh, I came in to see Matt, and then we, you know, had a good, or talking about a variance, so, that's, uh, that's where we're at, so.
Okay, so basically, you're gonna need two variances, one for the north and one for the west.
Did you guys have a sign?
Did you guys have a sign in the yard for the variance?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it's on the, it's on the Superior Street.
So, what you see on that pad is where, it'd be a little less, cause it doesn't show on the sidewalk, but, um, kinda like where the garage actually would be.
Where is the location of this?
Um, if you're going down north, you know where there's the BP gas station there?
Uh-huh.
I'm about four blocks to the south of that, about three, four blocks up from the river.
Corner of Superior and Guyan, like kitty corners though.
RSR, right across the street from RSR.
Okay.
Yeah, right across, that's right.
Kitty corner from the highways.
Yeah.
Okay, pretty complicated.
It is a little complicated, this one.
Fifty-eight percent, okay, does, Vince, you guys have any questions or concerns?
No, I, I was on site yesterday, I'm, I'm good.
Bill?
I'm good.
Melissa?
Um, I don't, I don't like how close it would be to the alley for the, the north, but it, it just.
Could you speak up a little?
Just the two feet nor, from the, from the alley on the north, I, that is a concern for me.
Okay.
Well, if you're looking, Melissa, if you're looking at the alley, the actual blacktop of it, it's five feet from the edge of the alley of brass to the garage, so you actually.
That is, from that black line down to the gray, that's all a grass.
Yeah, that's a five, it's actually exactly five foot of brass before you even get to the blacktop of the alley.
And then you need another two feet, correct?
Um.
That's what the motion, that's what the proposal is.
No, that, that part of that's probably the actual right of way.
Yeah, it's just the right of way part of it. We're not in the alley.
It says that they want two feet from the north property line.
Correct, but that five feet of grass area probably includes three feet of city right of way.
Well, it does or it probably does, I mean.
Makes a difference.
It's on an alley on a bit, I mean, in Guyan, I just.
If you went there, Melissa, you'd see right off the.
I did, I was there today.
So, you, did you see?
Driving by slowly.
Yeah, the grass right there, and you, it's with the tape measure, but if you're going eighteen feet total from the center of the alley to proposed lot line, it's probably eighteen inches, I'm guessing, maybe not quite two feet, slightly less. But you do have five feet of grassway before you even approach on that alley at all. So, it's not like the, definitely the garage.
Well, he's just going to the slab.
See the house right next to it, that, the back of the house, see how that concrete pad lines up?
Yeah, I do.
The garage is almost exactly in line with right there, that house. Or that's a pad, actually, but it's right, it's, it's pretty close.
The actual property line is about where that exit, you can't really see it very well, but if you measure, you know, basically nine feet from the center of that, of that alley, the property line is probably right about there. So, that, the, the, the two feet would be that little space right in there, you know?
Well.
But the, just so you know, like, the pad has been there for twenty years, so that wouldn't change, the only thing that's gonna change is the wall would be there now. Cause the gable's facing the road, so you're just gonna see a wall there, so nothing is gonna move closer to that alley or anything. It's just gonna have walls on it now, the concrete's already been there for, if you seen the pad, you know it's old or older.
Okay, another thing we do is we don't let you drain your water off on other people's property. No, one foot, no, one foot overhang. So, you're not draining your water on other people's property, cause we're not getting the city involved in any property line disputes.
All right. Well, the pitch of the roof is, is gonna drain.
It's gonna drain north and south.
Yeah, it'll, it'll.
So that means.
Not necessarily, you could, you could run gutters and drop to the east, you could drop it to the.
Or it's gonna fall into the road.
No, that's, I'm just saying that we've had a lot of people come in here, wanna drain their roofs right on the property line. And we don't wanna get the city involved in any property line disputes.
I don't think there would be on this one because.
I'm just saying, I'm not pitching a fit, I'm just saying it that.
The pitch of the roof is gonna be facing Guyan, correct?
The road, so, your garden line would run along that grass, and then it'd have, uh, kicked out towards the front, you know?
Yeah, you could, you could pitch the, the drop towards the front.
Yeah, that's it.
On the north and the south side, it's gonna run towards Guyan Street.
Correct.
So.
Or the alley or the side.
It depends on which way you turn your downspouts.
That's the grass section?
Yeah, so the actual property line probably runs somewhere right where this hand is, is going. That's probably about where the, the property line is.
So, from where he's saying, there's, if there's a five foot easement, you got about three foot there, or give or take, it's probably a little less. But, yeah, we'd just be going right on that pad, right there.
So, are you the owner of the property?
No, he's, he's this, the whole door.
Okay, all right, now I get it, I, I had those two guys break stuff.
I.
That's, if you were asking about the pad.
No, the, the garage will stop at that, where the, where, right there.
Right there, it's, it's not the consolment route.
The rest of it'll be driving.
So, there's no footings, it's just a?
No, it's, but, like, we've done a lot of garages on one foot thick slab, uh, as long as it's not attached to any permanent structure.
Yeah.
I don't know if Iowa, that is still allowed in Iowa, or, or either Iowa or the South County would maybe put, go to foundation.
That, that was purely for my own edification.
Oh, I forget which one, uh, they, they did change it, so.
Uh, I believe the South.
I think Ottawa did.
Did, was it Ottawa, yeah?
I think Ottawa did.
Yeah, it was Ottawa, I thought it was the South.
The, the county does for anything, and we do it for anything over six hundred square feet, building code, the I, IRC requires for long foundation, cross free, anything over six hundred square feet. So, that's our threshold.
This is eight hundred and forty square feet.
It is, and we would.
Why is it so big?
We would say that we can't, I mean, if you wanna use that, that's up to you, you know, we're not gonna, um, take any responsibility for that foundation, cause we don't know what it is, so.
Okay.
Grab you, you're getting bigger.
Didn't he disturb the time?
Seen it in the house, they have four car rides, and only, one of them has a car.
Will that house own any neighborhood for, for for garages?
Well, and does anybody have any questions about the going over the fifty percent of the primary structure?
I don't have a big problem with the fifty-eight percent.
Yeah, I do.
Hmm?
No. Okay?
I'm good.
Melissa?
The fifty-eight percent, I won't admit, isn't the concern, the, being right on the corner at the alley is my, is my biggest, the concern that I have. But, no, the fifty-eight percent I'm fine with.
Well, I guess I should do it then. Well, I'd like to have a mom make a, somebody to make a motion to either accept or reject the.
I would like to make a motion to accept.
As written?
As written.
Vince, for anybody to second it?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Matt, do, should we read this into the record? Um. It was as written. It was just passed as written.
Yeah, I don't think it would hurt to read it into the record. Yeah, cause it was a draft, uh, motion, just to assist with the actual motion.
You up for it?
What, to read this?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the motion to approve the construction of the new detached garage, uh, at three twenty eight C Superior Street has been approved as written. Said motion will include the reading of three variances. First variance is two feet from the east property line, three feet from the west property line, and two feet from the north property line. Second variance will allow the cumul, cumulative square feet of all accessory structures to exceed fifty percent of the primary structure. The primary structure is currently one thousand, or fourteen eighty-six square feet according to LaSalle County Assessment Records. The proposed detached garage requested is eight hundred and forty square feet, which exceeds the fifty percent requirement by six percent. Third variance, allow exceedance of the building area requirement for the lot by approximately eighteen percent. The single and two-family residential district A two allows for forty percent building footprint. The proposed development will have a building footprint of approximately fifty-eight percent, which is eight hundred and forty square feet for the garage, and one thousand four hundred and eighty square feet for the living structure. Lot size is four thousand square feet. Thus, please include this into the motion to pass.
Okay, we'll go again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, three to two, the motion carries. Okay, we are strictly an advisory board. We recommend you go to the next city council meeting, which is?
Uh, July second.
July second, it's not required. It's part of the mayor's minutes, which is toward the end of the meeting, but we never have any idea what time, uh, how long the meeting gonna go. So. They said we're strictly an advisory board, so. Okay, the next question for variance. Tom and Janelle Chokolsky, Chokolsky?
Say that again?
Chokolsky.
Chokolsky?
Yep, Janelle Chokolsky.
All right.
Speak up though, cause we didn't hear it when you were walking up here.
My name's Janelle Chokolsky.
Okay.
My husband and I are trying to, would like to build a detached garage.
Speak into the mic, would you? The mic's not hooked. Oh, the mic's not working, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I'll try to stop, talk loud. Um, so.
Mine, the mic's not working either, so.
You'll have less. Um, we'd just like to put up a detached garage in our backyard. We have an acre, approximately an acre on the south side, seven oh eight Arch Street.
Okay.
Um. It's a huge backyard for. We have, we al, we already have a two, it's considered a two-car garage, um.
Is your garage on arch, like, the front and then the side? You have a place that's?
So, the front garage faces arch.
Uh-huh.
Um, this is, we've talked numerous times about just making that into what we need. The people that own the house before us just continued to, like, attach, add on to things. So, that garage, um, got extended, and the bottom, I call it the back bottom garage, it's more of a shop. Uh, you can't fit a car in it. It has a garage door, like, the front is, I don't even know, front part of it, you, I guess you had a boat in there maybe, like a fishing boat? But, um, there's, yeah, that's, kinda feel there, um, that's, um.
Okay, so basically, turn, on the right side, it turns in and goes toward the left.
So, you can see we have a trailer down in that portion of the driveway, there's two driveways, yep?
Right.
So, yeah, the other side goes, it's a shop in the back.
Right, but it turns in and has a?
Yeah, and it's a lower level, so like, from our garage, that's attached to the house, you come out, you walk down steps, you're in the two-car garage, but it's more of like, you can't fit more than one car and maybe some.
Stuff.
I don't know how they figured that that's a two-car garage, you have to have two little tiny cars.
Are they both attached to the, or, well, the one garage, I know it's attached, is the, the back bottom is attached as well?
It's all attached, yeah. And originally, we would've loved, we've talked about this, like, just gutting the inside of that and making it all one big garage. With all of that, this, it just is not economically even, even if you, if we went and did variances for that, it wouldn't work. So, we, I finally talked him into building a garage out back. He would like a garage to, like, fixes our vehicles. We, we have three vehicles right now. Both have a work car and another truck, we snowmobile, so we have a trailer for snowmobiles. He wants to build a boat. Um, so it's kinda more of a hobby shop that he would like. I tried to talk him out of looking in the houses, like, he was looking for houses out in the country. We have an acre in town. I don't, if, if it's okay, we would love to build a forty by sixty garage. I know it sounds smart, but we had it all out in, we marked it all out in yard at one point to see if that would even be appropriate. It looks like it would fit great.
Is it a garage, or is it gonna look more like a whole building, or?
Yeah, well, the, well, and we're kind of, we're trying to figure out if it would be Morton, we had Morton Building come and we're waiting on an estimate for that. Um, so, yeah, it could be a whole barn, it could be stick built, it's.
Why, why do you need that bigger building?
It would be nice to have a game room and stuff too, like, so we'd have the garage part for him to do his, build a boat, he wants to build this pontoon boat, and then have part of it be like the game room.
That makes sense.
Cause we don't have room in the house for.
Yeah, right, that makes sense, but, but I, I just.
Yes, yeah, so it would be a hobby slash garage, it's not, we don't wanna live in it.
Right.
Don't even know if we would, we haven't even talked about it necessarily, putting a bathroom, because we don't necessarily need one. It's not far from the house, it's far enough, but possibly.
That's a whole other story. So, why are we asking for a, a structure height limit to be increased if we don't even know what we're building?
Well, we have a, we have, it's set out to what we would like to build. We have thirty by sixty, and he's, he got called into work.
Okay, so you, you just don't really have the best answers, got you?
I don't have the best answers for this, however.
And is it thirty by sixty, because we have thirty-eight by sixty-four?
Thirty-eight by, it was between thirty-eight, he has, thank you. He has, so, we talked about from forty to si, forty by sixty, and because Morton Buildings was talking to him, and they said, well, we do them in certain ranges or whatever. He said, well, how about thirty-eight, and go, give us an estimate for thirty-eight by sixty, thirty-eight by sixty-four? Cause he's not sure, he knows specifically what he would like for his side of the garage. We're calling the other side, like, basically in thirds. Two thirds is his, the other third is.
How high are the walls?
Ten feet, I believe, that was for the, that's the variance. We wanted a ten-foot garage door, so it had to be, so twelve foot, that's why. Ten-foot garage door, because he wants to build a boat inside the garage.
But you're asking for a proposed structure between one feet tall.
No, that's.
That's the center, probably, the.
Yeah, that's.
No, that's what I'm, yeah, but a four, wait, wait, let's not.
We need high garage doors.
No, twelve-foot walls with a ten-foot garage door makes sense.
Yeah.
Does it, okay.
Okay.
And then we would like attic space.
But then with a four twelve pitch on the roof.
We want like space. If that helps any. I know he asked for attic trusses, if we did stick building, and he, he said through Morton, they said that they can put an attic up there, and they talked about that as well. So, he would like attic for storage, so that it, all of the stuff that he uses is not always right out.
No, if you put eight foot, twelve-foot walls, eight foot, you have a twenty foot, and you still gotta have a roof.
Officially, you're asking for a variance for room for more stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, and.
Yeah.
Kinda.
I've been through that in my life.
What is the percent over? Cause that wasn't on our, like, for the one for the, above one, it said the percentage that it was over. Cause it's more, you know?
No, here it is.
This doesn't require that because of the size of the lot, um, they're not at that, the, the footprint of structure, because this is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet lot, and, you know, it's a two thousand square foot shed, and it's a two thousand square foot house, so they don't have to ask for that particular one on this one.
It says to allow an accessory, accessory, accessory structure to exceed fifty percent of the primary.
Nice lots out there.
Right, because this is gonna be bigger than the house.
That's, so how much bigger is what, it was what?
Uh, four hundred and thirty-two, so it's one hundred percent, no. Four.
Well, and then it also is dependent on what the primary structure is, cause there's a discrepancy there.
Primary structure is two thousand eighty-six.
Yeah, the assessment record says two thousand eighty-six, on their, um, on their proposal, they said it was three thousand something.
I think, I believe he added.
So, that's including the attached garage?
Right.
So, realistically, I mean, which way do we wanna look at that, either way?
That was kinda my question.
Yeah.
You know, and it could be that it hasn't been, you know, the assessment records may not be.
We don't account, I mean, as a real estate agent, we don't count attached garage as a square footage of a house.
But it is for this.
But you.
Cause it's attached.
It is.
You consider the shed also part of our, um, whatever on the, in the yard as well.
That's a, that's a, an accessory building, but some of it, we had to somehow include that in there. So, if we're going by the twenty eighty-six, is this eighty-six percent?
The.
Well, this is, yeah, because that would be more.
Detached garage is one hundred and twenty-one percent of the original house. So, twenty-one percent over the original house, if you use the two thousand eighty-six square feet. Now, they say three thousand sixty square feet, so the.
Did you contact Marcy to have her come out and read?
I don't know.
No.
I as, I assume he just added that garage on there like that, so if that's not how it is, then it would be based on your twenty.
I think even with that, though.
Just the house.
I think you're still missing a couple hundred.
No, wait, wait, wait. Is the detached garage counted as part of the house when it's assessed?
She said that they're all attached, all the garages are attached. That's what I.
This is all attached.
She said everything's attached.
That's attached to this, this is attached to a.
But that's not living structure.
No, but that's assessed.
Okay.
That's different.
Right.
Okay, the twenty-four thirty-two divided into the three thousand sixty is seventy-nine percent.
Yeah, and then if it's the twenty eighty-six, then it's at eighty-six percent, correct?
No, twenty forty-two is over one hundred and twenty-one, it's a hundred and twenty-one percent. Twenty forty-two divided by, twenty-four thirty-two divided by two thousand sixty.
It's twenty-one percent. It's, it exceeds it by twenty-one percent, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if it's the total square footage of three thousand sixty, it is, the variance is for twenty-nine percent over the fifty percent requirement.
But that includes the garage?
Yeah, but that's.
That's included, cause it's attached to the house.
It's attached to the house, that's how they assess it. So, the garage is attached to the house.
And we have always taken, taken what the assessment records have, cause that's usually the best records that we have.
Yeah, unless you had like, uh.
Unless they come in with a survey.
Yeah, I was gonna say, unless you had a survey.
Yeah.
So, just, just, just penciling this out on, on the screen here.
Everyone's did.
The, the, the structure, the footprint of that, that structure with all its attached garages is around three thousand square feet. So, his record is probably closer than what the assessment records are, so I guess it would be up to the board to decide if we wanna use what the assessment records have, or what they presented.
We should probably use these assessment records, the Republican governor.
Okay, so that's twenty nine percent.
Yeah.
Over the fifty percent limit.
Yeah.
But don't we have to add in that shed that's way in the back, back there?
Yep, the ten by twenty shed, which.
No, that adds to your percentage of auxiliary structures.
Right.
That's ten by twenty.
Cause I wish, you're, ten by twenty, yeah, is that, yeah.
That just pushes you over that percentage a little bit higher, that's all.
Right.
Thirty three percent?
You can use roughly or approximately, and, and, and at the end of the day, it's, uh.
So, to make it be the same as how this was presented? Um, this was fifty eight percent.
So, what does that for this mean?
Thirty six percent.
Thirty six percent, how could I be three percent on?
Thirty six percent.
Well, you've been accused of being able to blow off your whole life.
Thirty three percent over the fifty, that's allowed?
Well, I didn't have to blow off this, this, the first six months of this year, you know that.
I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Who's more funding people, right?
I don't know where that came from.
I mean, yes, I think the answer to your question is yes.
Hope it did go out loud.
Right, he wants to be a.
Sure, words were never spoken.
Correct.
Well, I've been accused of that too, so.
Seventy and.
Okay, here's, here's the math, twenty six thirty two divided by three thousand sixty is eighty six minus the fifty, it's thirty, brings that ratio up to fifty six, thirty six percent over the fifty percent limit.
Well, so a total of?
We're not even counting, so you're not counting the actual garages at all then, the other attached garage?
No, 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 he said that that, the garage, the attached garage is three thousand sixty square feet.
Mm-hmm, right?
Right? So, they add in twenty four thirty two, but there's also a ten by twenty garage back there, which is two hundred square feet.
Okay.
Add that up, you get twenty six thirty two, divide that into that, it comes up to eighty six, you subtract the fifty, you get thirty six percent over the fifty percent limit.
Gotcha. So, eighty six percent of the entire?
Yes, the auxiliary structures are eighty six percent of the primary structure.
The primary.
So, the limit is fifty percent, so they need a variance to bring it up to.
A variance of thirty?
Six.
Thirty six percent?
Yeah.
Now, this board does not have the authority to grant that, or do we?
Correct.
No, we advise the city council.
Okay.
I think my biggest problem is not knowing what they're building.
So, we can't, we can't judge it today.
No, we.
We're not even.
We gotta, just gotta give them.
What materials?
They make the decision.
They make the decision.
Yes.
So, you understand.
Either Morton Building or a garage, it's the same thing, a garage, it's who builds it, basically.
Now. No, no, that's irrelevant to us.
No, not. Well, is it? She just said she, Celeste just.
I think my concern is like, we don't even really know what they're building, they're asking for a variance on size and height, and we don't even know what they're actually building, you know what I mean?
No, the, the city building code now says you have to have foundations, so essentially, it's going to be essentially a garage, depending upon the price of how they're gonna build it.
And we would allow a Morton type building, post frame building, um, or stick built building, I mean, we've had the building codes, they have to follow those building codes, if we've got the, the dimensions and the plans, and it, it, it looks, um, I think if the code says it has to look similar to what the primary structure is, that's all that we care, if we've got the dimensions of what it's gonna be and.
So, my question is, do they have to bring it back to you once they decide to, they're building?
Yes, yes, once, if it should get approved, then they have to come back for building permit.
Okay.
Um, and apply for the building permit, at that time, we would look at the plans, we'd make sure it matches whatever was approved.
I guess that's what I'm making sure, is like, we're not just gonna say, go ahead, yeah, you got permission, and they're just gonna build whatever now.
Yeah. No, they have, they have to come back and get the building permit, this is the first step before they give you an apply for this.
Right.
You're giving your many second thoughts.
Yeah, we have to get the variance just to get the permit, and then once we get the per, once we get the variance, we can figure out
Yeah.
who's gonna build it, and then they will get the permit, hopefully they come give, well, either one of us, either one of them gets the permit.
The Morton and other villages used to put just dry poles in the ground, the, the city building code said, no, we can't do that, they now have to, they've now got specialized concrete things they put in the ground.
Yeah.
It's essentially still a hole barn, but they now have concrete foundations.
Gotcha.
They're not.
I mean, that's just a large variance.
Yes.
It is.
It's not the biggest one we've ever given.
It, it seems big, like, on paper, but like, if you look at, this is actually run out basically as well as.
I mean, I get that you have a large yard, I don't deny that, cause your yard, I was like, oh my god, it really is deep, but for the structures
Right, you don't know until you actually look.
that it is around, for the house, for your house and for the other houses, it's, it's a large structure, it's, you know.
Right.
That, for the lot size.
It doesn't fit in with most of the neighborhood, even though you have a larger yard.
But. It's a large structure, it's a large variance.
One of the things is it's gonna be one of the tallest structures in that neighborhood.
That's why I was asking about the height variance.
Yeah.
That's, actually, the height variance is my biggest concern.
Well, the yard slopes off to the back, it's like a house in, in a.
Then it's Upworth behind you, right? It's Upworth?
That's Upworth Village thing, whatever, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, there's a fence, and we were coming off like twenty feet from the, the back, so we weren't needing any variances from any side.
No, cause you're about, your yard, your yard is large enough.
Right, right.
Yeah, if you had a double lot, you could run cattle.
Actually, I think.
I doubt the neighbors would like that, Vince.
Cause they, they have less.
People live in town versus out of town for a reason.
You'd be surprised how many people have chickens.
Oh, one minute I had goat until something ate them. I did.
That was raccoons, probably.
I think it was, cause it tore everything up.
Well.
Sorry, some of us are newer and have more questions.
That's okay, I wish I had been a little more prepared.
Do we have the authority to do this?
Yes.
We do, okay.
I make a motion to deny, is that what you're looking for?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm making a motion to deny the variance, it's, it's, um, as it was presented, proposed, written, what, I don't, I don't know the right verbiage I'm supposed to be saying.
No, you're fine, you're doing fine.
Okay. If anybody would like to second that, or?
Any motion just.
Would I ask the question?
Yeah.
As, you said as proposed, what?
Something that isn't so massive to be, it's a large variance for those other, I mean, I get that you have a big yard, but it's.
I mean, I don't believe it would be as tall as the house behind it.
Um, it's just the, the size of the, the garage.
Right.
Is so mu- it, it's just too big of a, it's too large of a variance.
That, that's the sort of thing that goes with a house.
Are those the church duplexes behind it?
I get it, those are the duplexes from the church, yes, and they're tall, and based on size of them, I was thinking that it didn't, like,
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I've tried to think too, like, is this gonna be overbearing, like, I don't want something overbearing in my yard either, um.
Well.
But it won't even like, I, I didn't think that it would even be as, it's, it won't be as tall as those houses back there, and I just didn't think that, for one, it would help block some of them, and we don't use a whole board from what they are, it's fine.
No.
And like, he has said, we're just an advisory board, and it's just, I'm just the one denying it, no, but I mean, you know, everybody else might.
Right, no, I was just asking what, what could.
It's just, it's too, it's, it's too big, yeah.
Too big.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, now what happens?
Now, it ain't done yet. Is there a motion to accept the variance is written?
Still moved.
You second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's three to two.
And it was Vince and Bill, right?
Yes.
Okay.
You understand that we're an advisory board, we don't have the last say.
I realize that, my question was going to be if it got denied, does that mean it couldn't go then, it wouldn't go to the next step? Which, if it did get denied by.
No, it goes to the next step, regardless.
No, but, yes, it goes.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, yeah, we're just the advisory board, it goes to, uh, it goes to the city council members at the, at the July twenty seven.
Jessica.
Second.
I used to be on the council.
So, across off the bottom.
Yeah, that's a mistake, I think that's a advisory board meeting, it was supposed to be on twenty seven.
Oh, oh, right, seemed like a ways away.
So, I know some of the rules. To the first, first as written variance.
Pardon?
To the first as written variance, I think we need to, um, allow an accessory structure to exceed fifty percent of the primary structure, the primary structure, according to the Sal County assessment records, is two thousand eighty six square feet. We have.
Yeah, but we just, we just thought it was three thousand.
So, you can come to the July second meeting, and they may, if you want, if you guys can be here, they may ask you some questions.
Well, what I'm saying is, we need to change that.
That throws everything up in the air, cause the owner states that the house is three thousand sixty square feet.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, you need to change that.
Well, there went my math calculation.
No, I think you used it on.
You used the three thousand.
You used the three thousand plus square feet, because I came up with thirty three percent just figuring in my head, and it was thirty six percent with your calculator.
Yeah.
So, you need, you can't use the Sal County assessment records, you have to basically refer.
So, you should use the Sal County assessment records.
Unless you have a survey, Jen, do you guys have a survey at all?
No.
Yeah, I know.
No.
Okay.
They don't have a survey or a mortgage inspection plat or anything.
Then I think we should be using those, those Sal County assessment records.
Okay, then, if you use the Sal County records, the thirty six percent math is wrong.
Right.
Yeah, cause you're a hundred and twenty one percent.
So, it goes from thirty six percent to twenty one percent.
No, it goes to seventy one percent.
Which is where you were headed, right?
It's thirty eight percent.
Hundred and twenty one percent.
We have to agree on our math first.
No. Two thousand forty two.
That's why I went to law school, I couldn't do math.
Two thousand four hundred thirty two square feet is one hundred and twenty one percent of two thousand eighty six square feet, subtract fifty, you're at seventy one percent over, the variance is seventy one percent over.
Well, if that's case, then we need to add that the accessory structure will exceed the primary structure square footage by seventy one percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I think that should be read into the variance. Can you read it, Rob?
Yes.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure that, yeah.
Seventy one percent is what I'm putting in the notes, in minutes?
Yeah. Yeah.
Convenient for Dan to not be here today, so I'm the one doing the minutes, so, wanna make sure that I have it right.
Sorry.
So, it's allow an accessory structure to exceed fifty percent of the primary structure, the primary structure, according to the Los Al County assessment records, is twenty eighty six, and then I put the seventy one percent there?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the reason, there, what's gonna happen is they're gonna ask us, how in the hell did they come up with seventy one percent? And they'll blame the lawyer, he can't do math.
And then I'll see Charlie's then. I just typed it.
Yeah.
Well, just don't answer your phone for long.
That's a hell of an idea, how to do that.
So, why would the assessment say so, like, two thousand or, cause that's the size of our house? The actual house, why would it, like, I don't understand why, the, the garage isn't included, it wouldn't be in like, normal realty stuff, right?
Well, where did you guys get your thirty at?
Thirty.
You have three thousand something.
You're, you have three thousand and sixty.
That's adding the garages.
I'm guessing that he added the garages.
Right, so either.
Because of the footprint.
I believe when I measured it, that there was still, or maybe I took out the breezeway, because that's not always counted.
It's, it's not a breezeway anymore, though.
Um. Oh, okay.
That's actually.
Cause there was still, um, feet missing.
Matt, is the property record card from the county at both the house and the garage square foot, John, sometimes they do.
So, total garage square feet, they have two thousand eighty six, garage, they have seven hundred and four and two sixty four.
So, that was the two additions of the garage.
That was three thousand.
Maybe they were detached at one time, I don't know.
Well, it sounds like they were, so they.
They could have been with that breezeway.
So, that's why they're considering starting accessory buildings, they were originally accessory buildings.
Like, yeah, okay, that makes sense, okay.
Yes. Yep.
And this picture was taken back in two thousand nine, so.
Yeah, we were. Where they were adding it, oh, you know what?
Because you see the siding.
Yeah, okay.
That was the yard, so.
So, it was not finished incorrectly, they just threw something up there to, to connect them, I mean, who knows if that was even done appropriately, which is not your problem.
Okay, so.
It's all done.
So, are we gonna go with the twenty eighty six, or are we gonna go with the thirty sixty, or are we gonna have Marcy redo it, or are we at the seventy one?
I would like to know how they actually figured that.
I don't know, I still have one class left, so I'm not officially an assessor, so I don't know, and I work in mapping at the assessor's office, so I don't know. I bet you're.
It would be nice for future reference, and it's always been.
I thought this was gonna just be so simple.
I probably should have.
I was just like, oh, you got, you just gotta go.
It seems to me everything's hooked together, it should be considered the primary structure.
If, if it's all connected, it should be considered the primary structure.
Yeah.
And how the, how the assessor's office figures it usually public.
That's what I was gonna say, so we're, we need to go through that.
Well.
Cause it is currently connected and finished.
Usually they may not pull evidence even when they attached it, so maybe it got assessed separately because of that.
Yeah.
Bingo, yeah, somebody else's problem became yours.
Well, that's, yeah, usually what happens.
But it's like.
It's all attached, it should be the three thousand sixty.
So, you're saying my, my one is not.
Do we have somebody that we can.
Yeah, if it were being recorded, I'd say, go ahead and say it, but.
Man, is there somebody we can ask, she's, she's saying Marcy is that.
Well.
Marcy's the South Ottawa Township, well, Marcy's the, she's the assessor for Ottawa and Tomodaw, she's the assessor, so she would be the one who would do that.
I, I think that personally, um, Matt as a city official, um, and I'm not passing the buck here, but there's a reason for this.
Tell me why, just.
I think that it should go from Matt to the municipal attorney, and the attorney contacted county, and we put it in an official channel.
No, he's got ball.
Yeah, then it comes back to us.
So, we, then it comes back to us.
Yeah.
In.
So, it's not gonna happen this week.
Well, no, I would still.
Yeah.
Probably give her it based on.
Well, we're trying to make sure all the dots are right.
You think that's the right way or not?
You know.
Matt, do you ever just talk to Marcy, or no, do you always go?
Matt, if you don't think so.
Matt, you know, you to, can't link to Stephanie to Marcy.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, in my, in my, my thought. Yeah, in my, in in my, my thought is, I believe the maps, you know, I can't control what the assessment office does
and whether or not they go out there and assess the properties every year like they should, um, and measure exactly what it is.
So when somebody comes in and there's discrepancy, I look at the map. If it's a, if it's a new map and I can see that everything's connected, I would use that. But most of the time when things come in here, the best information that we have is the assessment records, because we don't have surveys. Uh, we don't have structures on the surveys. And this brings me to another point where I think that these variances in the future, we should require full-blown surveys that are done where an engineer or a design professional puts on there exactly the square feet of everything, exactly the size of the lot, calculates all this stuff.
Yep.
Before they bring it to us.
Even smaller sizes do that.
So in in my opinion on this one is I would, I would use the square feet of what they provided, because that's a lot closer to that primary structure than what the assessment records are.
Fifteen years ago in the time period when we did that.
That would be my opinion.
So you you.
I agree with you.
You'd use the two thousand eighty-six foot feet?
I would not. I would use the three thousand, because when we measured it on the screen, that's about what it was. And we can, we can obviously see that all that stuff is connected now. And I'm thinking at one time that they were probably all detached.
That it wasn't. Yeah.
So then we're back to thirty-six percent.
That would be my opinion. And then I would say, in the meantime, however you wanna handle it, I can contact the city attorney and say, okay, here's, here's what we have here. Um, the assessment records have this, but we can look on the map, obviously, and see that everything's connected and it's one primary. How do you want to provide this to the city council? Three thousand or two thousand? That would be my my thought.
Okay.
So essentially, you're not gonna get an answer tonight. Okay.
Well, she wasn't anyway. True.
No.
I, you you already made a motion. I think I think she can have her answer from this board tonight.
Yeah.
How it gets written up for the council is gonna be up to the city.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I think that we've had a motion on the floor, we've passed it.
We've we've had two motions, which.
Yeah. No, I, no, you had.
What the heck is that?
You had one that failed.
You had a motion that failed.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because it was just you and I.
It was two to three.
So you make another motion?
We can, yes.
Okay. I've just never seen that before.
Hmm, okay.
Just questioning.
No, we can make another motion.
You already made, you already made two motions.
Yeah.
But what they're saying procedurally correct.
We have a vote.
Yes, we did.
What is the Los Alamos record saying?
When the motion to deny was made, everybody should have voted on that.
We did. Two to three.
No, you didn't.
And you you said.
And you made another motion immediately.
You just said it it died without the three other votes. You didn't call for no nay votes, which you should.
I.
It has the same, it has the same respect or the same aspect of what you did.
You don't have to say.
You can't if you want to.
Not the same motions to approve, which was correct, procedurally that first vote never got completed.
That's what I was trying to say.
But that's.
No, you're point, I didn't do it. So I can, I can, but we've already got one motion that passed.
Yes, correct.
So essentially, it's.
It's just a little bit of procedure, one step is omitted. But I think I think you got a final motion that goes to the council, so.
Okay, it's the thirty-six percent. We'll go with the thirty-six percent.
Over the primary structure?
Because that's based on the three thousand.
Yes, thirty-six percent over the fifty percent.
When the assessment records look at. Well, then the second variance is should be modified to allow for the proposed accessory structure to exceed the zoning accessory strike, structure height limit of eighteen feet for a single-family home to the proposed accessory structure of twenty-one feet.
So are we changing this now?
No, this is another minor variance.
Oh.
This is a variance for the height.
The height.
Yes. I started the rest here. You can, you can have it.
Okay, so let me make a motion to accept the proposal for three-foot variance in the eighteen feet?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
No, at this point, I don't even know what the hell we're voting on. So I'm gonna say no to all of it.
Okay. Three aye votes, wait a minute, three aye votes. Any nay votes?
Nay. Nay.
Two nay votes. Now, is that how I'm supposed to do it?
Yeah, exactly.
Three to two.
I'll try to do better in the future. You're the smartest guy I ever met. Boy, you ain't met that many people.
Yeah.
Most shared family is smarter than I am. Again, we are just an advisory board. Now, it may not make its way through the bureaucracy till the next meeting. Probably call Matt the day of and ask him.
For like July second, that meeting?
Yeah.
Just to see if it's.
Yeah, because if it has to go through the city lawyer, may not make it back in time.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, we're just.
Coming back to us?
No.
No.
No, okay, we're out of it then.
Right. Like I'm saying, you may or may not be on the next agenda.
Okay.
It's.
Would, I mean, would we get, we won't get a letter this time.
That's up.
Last time we got a letter, I don't know, I had a letter saying to come.
No, I don't think they send them out when they're going for approval at the city council. Because that, that's actually not mandatory that you appear there. Okay, you have to appear.
Was it mandatory today then? It was mandatory, okay.
Yeah, we we table it if they don't show up.
Well, I'm gonna.
Yes, we are too. We're sorry it wasn't more clear.
I'm sorry I couldn't have helped more with it, but.
We'll figure it out.
Well, we had one of those tabled and they've now lost their chance. They never showed up. You know, so this is, somebody has to appear before us or we table it for a month. And but if you appear, we will do something.
Well, we'll call either myself or Tom will call again, um, July second, see how we're on the agenda and if that will be the next one, which is.
He'll he'll be able to answer those questions for you.
Actually, the agenda is posted on Friday afternoon, Friday before, so you can look at it online.
No, I never knew that. Never worried about that. I never knew it, so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Everybody likes that motion.